Hello, I promise I won't be by myself, he's on his way down. At least that's what he just yelled at me. Oops. Alright, so give me a second to get the watch party going. Okay. Hey Laura. Welcome, welcome, I'll get the watch party going here on the Bible study page. There we go. Okay. Hi hunters, welcome. I think somebody else might have popped on here too that I missed. Hi, okay. Oh, the hunters are, oops, I forgot. Sound off. I was thinking we was, oh, I've got my days mixed up again already. Alright, Deacon Mike, we are live down here, waiting on you sir.
Gentlemen. Late to the party, sorry.
You are late to the party, cuz I was late to the party.
Those poor people.
Cheers, I don't know.
Number of dollars waiting on a dime.
Hi Dory, I'm glad you're here. Glad all of you are here.
Hi Dory. Wish we were zooming, I could show you my map on here.
Well, if you'll send it to me, I might be able to upload it in the comments.
Uh, I don't think I can send it to the app, it's just telling my Word document. I'll just send you the whole document, and it's forty-seven thousand words.
We might be able to. I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Do you have my gum?
Yes, I do, everyone can hear me, we'll get started.
We should start with prayer before. Since you can pray the rosary with us.
No, I was working on this.
Hi, Mom is here with you too.
Hi Mom.
She prayed with me too.
Good.
Snoopy's here.
Yeah, Snoopy's right here.
Hey Lucia. Oh, we're just missing the cat. Let's hope she doesn't show up.
Okay. Um, okay, we can start, we're chapter three, that's all we're gonna get through tonight. Uh, we start with prayer, name of the Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Amen. Blessed are you, Lord God, Maker of all creation and of all good things. Um, you who sent your Son, Son among us, to do your will and to save us through doing his will. We ask that you open my lips and that you open all of our hearts, um, to receive the gift of your word. And to, to be able to cherish it and ponder it in our hearts, um, like the mother of your son, the blessed Virgin Mary did. We ask these things, Lord, through your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit. One God forever and ever, amen, name of the Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Matthew, pray for us.
Pray for us, okay, chapter three, uh, of Matthew. It starts out with, in those days, John the Baptist preaching of the wilderness of Judea. That's a paraphrase. Um, now, I have a map here that shows Palestine basically, or the, whatever you wanna call it, the chosen, the Cana or, um, we've got, I can't really show you the map unfortunately, but i- if this is, um, if this is Palestine, and this is of course, um, the west, that's the east, north, and south. Down here at the bottom, we have Jerusalem, right? And then to the east, running up this rift valley is the Jordan River, right? Coming out of the, which flows down into the Red Sea, right? Which comes out of the Sea of Galilee up here at the top, okay? Uh, now, at the top of that rift valley is the city of, of Bethany, okay, uh, Bethany by the Jordan. Different Bethany than the one next to Jerusalem. Uh, and then about halfway down is the city called, uh, and I don't even know how to say it, uh, Anon, A-E-N-O-N. I think there's a couple of different, um, um, pron- pronunciation of it. And then down at the bottom, just to the east of Jerusalem is Jericho, the old city of Jericho, okay? And what you'll notice is that, um, this, and, and that's the wilderness Judea, is that area down in the south, just to the east of, of Jerusalem, okay? Um, it's a very, very, so there's mountains, Jerusalem is very mountainous, if you've been to the Holy Land, I have not, but I know it's mountainous. And so to the east of the mountains, it's very, very arid, right? So really, the only water running down through there is the river Jordan, as far as I know. Um, but it's, it's really truly a desert area. Uh, and so John is, as, can you show them, if you can see?
It'll be backwards unfortunately.
Yeah, you can't really see it.
Can you point to it while I hold it?
You can't really see it. Um, so this is the area we're talking about, it's a tiny little map, I know. Um, but Jerusalem is, I'm gonna can't point to it, so there's the Dead Sea, Jerusalem's right over here. Uh, and up this rift valley is, and there's the Sea of Galilee, and this is the river Jordan running down through here, right? Uh, and so Jericho, actually it says Jericho right there, there's Jericho. And up here would be Bethany, and then this Anon, A-E-N-O-N, uh, location is kind of in between the two, okay? The reason I point that out is it get, it's, it mentions John in, in a lot of these places. Yeah, that's a way better map, you might wanna hold that up. One of those, it's good to get oriented in this, into this, can everyone see that? Can you see that? Okay.
Don't try to read it, it'll be backwards.
Dead Sea, right? Yeah, it's backwards on your screen unfortunately, if we were on Zoom, I could share my map with you, but, but, and this is the Jordan, right, and that's the Sea of Galilee, this is kind of a rift valley, it's very mountainous, and this is more flat, and this is all desert, this is called the wilderness, right, of Judea. Down here, and Jericho's, so Jerusalem is, there's Jerusalem, Jericho, it's not on this, there's Jericho right there, okay? And so John is up and down through this rift valley apparently. Um, so Matthew's Gospel starts out, in those days, John the Baptist preaching in the wilderness of Judea, so that's down south, right? Okay, good, you can kinda see it there, my hand looks so old. Um. Chapter, it, verse three, it says, "And he went all over the country round the Jordan," right, "announcing a baptism." So he's preaching up and down here. In John's Gospel, in, in chapter one, verse twenty-eight, it says, "All this happened in Bethany, that is beyond the Jordan where John was baptizing." So that's up in the north, right, apparently he's doing some baptizing up there. And in John, chap- chapter three, verse twenty-three, it says, "John also was baptizing at, uh, Anon, near Salim." So that's kind of in the middle there, it says, "because there was much water there, and people came out and were baptized," right? So apparently John's kind of up and down, this, this, look how excited I look. He's bas- uh, that's my understanding, I'm not an expert, but you'll see, it, it kinda, it can be a little bit confusing, but just know that apparently, John was kinda moving up and down. The setting for Matthew, and where he places the baptism of Jesus is in the wilderness of Judea, so he's down near Jericho. Which is actually very important, that's something that Matthew, and he's writing to a Jewish audience, he wants to make sure that he points that out. It's in the wilderness of Judea, near Jerusalem, near Jericho, okay? Um, Jericho is maybe about twenty miles from Jerusalem, right? Uh, and, uh, Bethany's like a hundred miles from Jerusalem, so that's a long way, anyway. And what is John preaching? Um, repent for the kingdom of heaven is at hand. Okay, we know that at this time, this is the beginning of Jesus' public ministry, we know that Jesus dies around, uh, thirty-three years old, right? Um, so at this time, John and Jesus are both about thirty years old, right? Which is, why thirty is, is important, why does they start then, why don't they start earlier than that? Because it was not lawful in the Hebrew tradition for anyone to, um, to act as a doctor, uh, well, the commentary say execute the, the office of doctor or priest before his thirtieth year, okay? So that's why John comes baptizing now, and that's why Jesus starts his ministry now, is my understanding, okay? It's not that he, uh, he had to save up, Jesus had to save up enough money in his 401K, working at his dad's shop. Obviously, I'm sorry, it's a bad joke, Jesus doesn't need a 401K, but anyway. It's because he starts, it's because this is when he becomes, he can officially go out and become, you call it a rabbi, or a teacher, or a master, right, or doctor of the law, right? And Jesus is all those things. Um, okay, John's mission is twofold. Um, it's one, to prepare Israel to receive the kingdom. So he's going before the king to announce the coming of the king, right? Or of the conqueror, right? So this is something that, uh, that, uh, the prophets often, and John comes in the, and he's Elijah, right, in the spirit of Elijah, Jesus tells us. Uh, and, and the prophets came, and that's what they did, they announced, and they called people back to repentance, right? For the coming of the king, who God is the king of Israel, right? Uh, in fact, back in the book of Judges, when they asked for a king, God's is want, is supposed to be the king, and he gives in to him, and he says this, you know, "You're, you're gonna regret doing this, I'm your king, but if you want a king over you like all the other nations, fine." And indeed, they do regret it, and it leads to the split of the kingdom, uh, 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 between north and south, anyway, I digress. So to prepare for the, for Israel to receive the kingdom, right, the coming kingdom, and the king. And number two, to identify Jesus as the Messiah, right? So he's got those two, um, kind of primary missions, is kind of what you see in the Gospels. He's going to announce, he's gonna call the people back to repentance, prepare for the king, and he's going to point out Jesus, and literally, he will do that. Behold the Lamb of God, right?
I'm sorry, it just made me think of the fact, we've been talking about with the young adults with, um, Exodus, the fact that when the Israelites came out of Egypt, it wasn't just getting them out of Egypt, it was also getting Egypt out of them, which Moses was calling them back to God. And John is calling them back to God, repentance and getting the sinfulness out of them.
Right, and I mean, you, Elijah's operating during time of the kings, um, and as a prophet, many prophets of course, but Elijah's one of the big ones, big, big, major prophets, right?
That's John.
Moses is the prophet, but Elijah would be right up there. Um, and anyway, um, so John's rep- uh, John's message is repent. For the kingdom of heaven is at hand. Why is repentance necessary? Number one, because God demands it. God demands it. In fact, repent is the first word that Matthew records Jesus ever sang, okay, in the Gospels, is repent. The same message that John gave, right? John says repent, and the first thing that Jesus preaches is repent. So God demands it, right, Jesus is God, right? Number two, um, and I'll, I'll quote Augustine here, and this gets into a little more, not full philo- theology, let's say, philosophy. Augustine says, "Unless one repent of his former life, he cannot begin a new life." So before you can set out on something new, before you can accept this new life in Christ, you've got to put off the old life, the fallen life, the sinful life, right?
It's like I was saying.
Saint John Chrysostom says, "Repentance cleanses the heart, it enlightens the senses, and it prepares the human soul for the reception of Christ." Because repentance, although sin is an inward turn, repentance is a good inward turn, okay? That examines oneself in light of the truth, God's revelation of who we are in, eh, eh, before God. Which is a form of humility, all humility, eh, I would say, and I was taught, is grounded, all true humility, authentic humility, is grounded in truth. Is grounded in truth, that's where it flows from, right? So to repent is to acknowledge the truth about yourself, who you are, what you've done, how you are, how you're living, and who God is and what he's calling you to, right? So repentance, humility, okay. Um, now, what is repentance, I just kinda gave you, said it's kind of grounded in, 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 eh, in humility and in truth. Um, repentance in the biblical and in the Christian tradition, uh, is not just only, uh, to change a habit or amend a habit that you have, a, a bad habit, right? Uh, and the beginning of a new life, that's simply not that, it is, and this comes from the Church Fathers, they say, it is a detestation, a chastisement, it's a destruction of the old sinful life, right? It's that radical, destruction of the old sinful life, that is repentance. To repent is to weep over your past sins and not to commit what you've been weeping over. Not to commit again what you've been weeping over. Um, Second Corinthians, chapter seven, verse ten, look that up real quick. Sorry, I kinda hit you with that, okay, while she's looking that up. So to repent is to weep over past sins and not to commit what has been wept over. In fact, Church Fathers and Doctors of Church will say, there is no repentance without tears, right? Um, which that's, that's a, that's a, uh, maybe say a metaphor, right? Um, something that kinda describes how, how much you repent. Um, first, Second Corinthians seven, ten.
For godly grief produces a repentance that leads to salvation and brings no regret, but worldly grief produces death.
Okay, alright, so Paul talks about it as well, right? Godly grief produces what?
Produces repentance.
Repentance, right, okay. Alright, um, basically cuz you're acknowledging who you are, what you've done, in the light of who God is, right? Again, we're grounded in truth here, right, okay? Um, "He who truly repents, he chastises himself for his past errors and lifts up his mind to heavenly things." Again, I'm quoting Church, just some excerpts from Church Fathers, okay? So we get the idea of what we're talking about as repentance. Now repentance includes three duties. Sorrow for your sins, a new life, and chastisement of, of sins, right? Sorrow, beginning of a new life, and the chastisement for those sins you have committed, right? Uh, in order to be pleasing to God. And I talk in the way, maybe with Pre-Vatican II would have talked, because I'm reading Church Fathers, and I like the way we used to talk about things. And as long as you look at it in, from the perspective of love, which is the way we should examine everything in Scripture and in tradition, and then, and in the church teaching from the perspective of love, these things aren't scary, right? They, but they're, they are arresting, or they are arresting, right, they, and they're meant to be that way, right? Um, okay, and how do we ex- and, and so I said that, sorrow for sin, uh, a new life and chastisement. And what do we express in the act of contrition? When you go to confession, and you should make your act of contrition at the end of the confession, the Father should ask you to do that, to express your sorrow. And if he doesn't, do it when you get out, okay? Um, we express sorrow for sin. "Oh my God, I'm heartily sorry for having offended thee, that we detest them, and I detest all my sins, because of digest punishments," right? "And I firmly resolve to amend my life," there's the new life, right? "And to avoid sin," that's the penance, right, that's the penance. Saint Cyprian says, "Penance is the penetrating salt which dries up the rankling, uh, putridness of the flesh," right? That's, that's his, so penance is not just a, a punishment, but it is, it is a medicinal thing for us, right? When we do penances that deny, that try to chastise ourselves, our bodies, and Paul talks about that too, chastises his flesh, right? Cuz he does the things he hates, right, and not the things that he loves, right? So that's part of penance, is, is, is a medicine, right? Is, is to, is to help us get mastery of our soul over our flesh, right? Because we're, we have a disharmony with, because of the fall, before the fall, the soul had mastery over the flesh, there was harmony within the human person. After the fall, there's disharmony, right? Your soul no longer has, eh, in your fallen state, no longer has mastery over your flesh, and over your emotions, over your desires, over the appetites, which are all good things, but because of the fall, now we love them in a way that we shouldn't, and we do them in a way that we shouldn't, right? Okay, anyway, so that's repentance. Sorrow, new life, and mastery of yourself or chastisement for sins, that's why I would, I would, I would think about it, right? But you're free to think about it however you want, that's just what I'm putting out there.
Sorry for my sins, I'll sin no more, and avoid whatever leads me.
And avoid whatever leads me to sin, right, so there's a new life, right? And I, and some, someone say, "And I resolve to do penance, to amend my life," right, those kinds of things, anyway. But there's this expression of the fullness of repentance in the act of contrition, that's why we should, we don't just say those words, we shouldn't say those words just off the cuff, right? That we should really kinda think about them a little bit, anyway. Okay, repent for the kingdom of heaven is at hand, right? That's a major theme of Matthew, is the kingdom of heaven, it per- it appears thirty-two times, you alright? Am I just staring at my notes too much?
No.
It appears thirty-two times in the Gospel, right? Now, the original plan of creation that God had, uh, was, uh, we just talked about, was shattered by sin, right, by the fall of man. This is disharmony between in, with, in his ma- eh, inside of man, this, this harmony, uh, between man and, and woman, or woman and man, man and, and other men, let's say, there's disharmony there. Disharmony between men, uh, or the human person and nature, right? And as, above all, disharmony between ourselves and God. The kingdom is no longer reigning over Adam after the fall, right? He's doing, I'm sure he's doing his best, and he's, he's receiving, um, you, it's not sanctifying grace, but prevenient grace or actual graces to help him live that, eh, eh, you know, according to, but he falls, and we all fall, right? So that, there's this, there's this idea that the kingdom has been shattered within us, right? And so that's the original plan, but to put it back into effect, there has to be a new intervention by God, right? Because only God can reestablish that harmony. Only God can reestablish that kinship, that covenant, right? That harmony between man and God. We're not able to get there from where we are, right, God has to come down, right? And that's, that's the reason for the incarnation, okay? Um, and so that reestablishing of this, this reestablishing of the harmony, or of the kingdom of God within the Christian, even though we still sin, we can go to the sacrament of confession obviously and get restored, right? Um, and we can make significant progresses in holiness, to where we're never committing another mortal sin, and even the venial sins are few and far between, right? It happens, great saints are like that, so there's, there's always hope for all of us, right? Um, anyway, um, and this is gonna happen through the, what?
I keep saying, anyway.
There, there, I, I don't wanna come off che- like it's, it's a bridge too far, right? Um, and this happens through the redemptive work of Jesus Christ, right, the Son of God. The kingdom of heaven, in a nutshell, is that in which God reigns in the faithful by grace in this life, right? And in the life to come by glory, right? And makes men and women partakers in his eternal kingdom. So the kingdom of God is the reigning within the hearts of people, right? Of God's die will be done on earth as it is in heaven, right? Now, in their Jew- original Jewish context, he uses the word heaven, remember, he's writing to Jews, right? He uses the word heaven, and this is helping to distinguish the kingdom that is going to be proclaimed, that is proclaimed by John, and the one that will be proclaimed and brought about by Jesus, to distinguish that from the popular, uh, expectation, messianic expectations of the people for a, a literal restoration of the political Israel, right? As, as a power in the region, right, as an empire. Uh, and so they, he deliberately uses heaven, right? Uh, and, um, in fact, this, this idea, and they'll never get over this hump, uh, not, not while Jesus, before his crucifixion. Uh, before Pentecost really, but, but this idea of a political kingdom would persist all through Jesus' public ministry. Um, and it's so, it's something that Matthew wants to highlight, cuz he's writing to Jews, right? And he's still bet- dealing with this, right? And Paul has to deal with the Judaizers as well, right? So even after his resurrection, um, if you read in Acts, chapter one, verse six, right? Uh, "His own apostles were still thinking in earthly terms even after the resurrection." Uh, it says, it's Acts, chapter one, verse six. "They therefore, who were come together, asked him, saying," and this is after his resurrection, "Wilt thou at this time," sorry, it's Old English, it's Deuteriums. "Wilt thou at this time restore again the kingdom of Israel?" That's after the resurrection, so they're still thinking in these terms, right? I'm sure it's been moderated and modified quite a bit in their little tiny brains, but it's still, that's what they're still envisioning, right? Um, okay, but the ki- that's not the kingdom, the kingdom is that which comes from heaven through his son, right? Um, and its full manifestation of that kingdom is not going to happen until the perusia, right? The, the coming of Jesus and, and the, uh, uh, as judge and glory, right? Um, Catechism, five forty-one, and six six nine, I'm kinda paraphrasing here. So the, the, we have an idea what the kingdom is, the reign of God in the hearts of men. Catechism says, "The presence of the kingdom is mediated through the church and history," okay? So it's not something, remember, God gives the kingdom, the Father gives the kingdom, the kingdom comes through Christ, and it is mediated through his body, through his ministers, right? Um, through the church in history, it's a, this is a real coming about of the kingdom in history. Uh, and that kingdom is also made visible in the church, right? The church is the mystical body, but it is also a visible edifice, a, a, uh, uh, of living stones, we should say, we could say, right? But it's, it's something that is a visible reality in the world. So there's this other aspect of the kingdom, not just in the heart, but it's actually something that's in the world, that's visible, that people can see, that people, people can be attracted to, okay?
Are we gonna talk about why John is where he is?
Yes, we will, we gotta get, but I gotta go, right? Um, so the carryout will of the Father, Christ is inaugurating his kingdom, eh, eh, the kingdom of heaven on earth, right? Um, now, the Father's will, uh, is to, to raise up, and I don't have the quote exactly. "The Father's will is," this is Jesus saying, "The Father's will is to raise up men to share in his own divine life," right? And he does this by gathering people around his Son Jesus, and this gathering is the church, right? "On earth the seed and beginning of that kingdom already present in mystery, already present mystically," right? And that's Lumen Gentium says that. And so, Catechism six seventy says, "Already the final age of the world is with us, and the renewal of the world is irrevocably underway. It is even now anticipated in a certain real way. For the church on earth is endowed already with a sanctity that is real but imperfect," because we're all sinners still, right? "And Christ's kingdom already manifest, eh, is manifest its presence through the miraculous signs that attend its proclamation by the church." The, the saints, the miracles, um, the spread of the church in spite of persecutions. All these things are things that point to the kingdom being manifested already among us, right? But it is an already not yet, that's, that's something that, it's a, it's a phrase that, that Pope Benedict loved to use. It's already, but it's not yet, alright, so it's already present, uh, the kingdom is in his church. Christ's reign nevertheless has yet to be fulfilled by his return, right? And until that return, the churches and us are under attack by evil powers, even though they've been defeated by Christ, right?
Oh, Lord Jesus.
Right, okay. I won't go into the rest of this about the heavens and earth passing away. Um, okay, moving on here. Um. Verse three, "The voice of one crying out in the wilderness," that's a quote of Isaiah forty, which I won't read to all of you, but he's a, he's the disembodied voice, he's the, the person who is not promoting himself, he's not the person, uh, although he was announced, he's in the wilderness crying out, "Make way, uh, make level the path of the war, the Lord," right? "Make way, the light, the way, make straight, or make, make way for the Lord," right? Um, Isaiah forty says, "Be comforted, be comforted by people, say through God. Speak ye," Isaiah forty, "Speak ye to the heart of Jerusalem and call her, for her evil has come to an end, an end. Her iniquity is forgiven, she hath received the hand of the Lord, double all her sins," talking about the Babylonian exile. "The voice of one crying in the desert, prepare ye the way of the Lord, make straight in the wilderness the paths of our God," right? That's Isaiah forty. And this, Isaiah forty was given, uh, to, uh, by God to Isaiah, to Isaiah to proclaim, um, to the captives in, in Babylon, who were gonna returning from exile, announcing their imminent return from captivity, that's what John's doing. Inimm- intimate return, imminent return of all of us from the captivity of sin, right? There's a parallel there, and all three evangelists apply this, uh, Isaiah forty to John the Baptist, to John the Baptist. Now, they're coming from, probably from a common source, but they all, they all, um, apply it. Um, okay, to, to make way, uh, to prepare the way the Lord to make straight his paths, literally is to make a highway or a pathway for the coming of a king or a conqueror, that's something that the ancients would do, they would build a road for them into the city, right? So that he could process into the city, right?
That didn't have potholes and.
Anyway.
No, seriously, it was making straight.
Yeah.
The path.
Fill in the valleys and the low, yeah, and it says that, um, "The crooked shall become straight, and the rough ways plain, and the glory of the Lord shall be revealed," right? So this is what John's talking about, "Make way in your hearts," right? "Make a level path, a, a, uh, get rid of all the obstacles," right? It all, it all ties in the, in the repentance, okay?
Landing path.
Okay. Now, verse four, it says, "Now John," we'll get through all this, I promise, we're only halfway through the hour. "Now John wore a garment of camel's hair and a leather girdle around his waist, and his food was locusts of wild honey." You all know this about John, right? He was the hairy one, he was the hairy guy, not Esau, but he was hairy, right? Um, so John is coming, uh, in, in the spirit of Elijah, that's what Jesus tells us after the Transfiguration, right? They, the disciples say, "Lord, isn't Elijah supposed to come first?" And, and Jesus says, "Elijah has come, and Elijah will come," right? Uh, he's speaking of John the Baptist, right? Uh, is, he comes in the spirit of Elijah, right? He dwells in the desert. Elijah dwelt in the desert. Um, he speaks truth to power, right? Elijah certainly stro- spoke truth to power, he was no respectful, he was no respecter of persons, right? He called, uh, a spade a spade, right? I can, I hope that's a good term, uh, terminology to use, um, I'm angry about this kinda stuff, anyway. Um, so he speaks the truth to power, he's calling people to repentance, and he also speaks truth to power to the Pharisees and the Sadducees. And to King Herod, right?
And he also wore the same type of clothing.
And he even dresses like him, he wore, uh, and. He wore, uh, in Second Kings, chapter one, eight, it says he, uh, this is Elijah, I'm sorry.
I'll read it. Where is it? They answered him. He wore a garment of hair cloth with a belt of leather about his loins. And he said, it is Elijah that should tish fight.
Mm-hmm, yep. So John even looks like him. So John is Elijah come, right? Who was supposed to come before the Messiah, right? And indeed he did.
So Matthew writing to the Jews, they would read this and, and they would see, oh, he's, he's.
They would recognize that, right?
Wearing a garment just like Elijah.
Right, so he's, right. So he's, he's, he's basically pointing to this is the Messiah, Messiah, Messiah. Which we, uh, the, you know, the, um, like earlier, he said David, 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 right? The new David, this is the Messiah. Um, okay. Um, and then verse five, it says, then went out to him Jerusalem and all Judea and all the region around the Jordan, the Jordan, which is a very long river that goes up the river valley, right? But they're coming from Jerusalem, they're going around down near Jericho. And that will be actually be explicitly said, go ahead.
And I just want to say that the Jordan River flows through horribly barren wilderness that's hot. And it's literally going to the lowest point on the face of the earth.
Oh, that's true.
Twelve hundred feet.
The Dead Sea.
Sea level.
Yeah, water goes into the Dead Sea, it does not come out. That's it.
So why would they be going out there, Deacon Mike?
Well, we'll get to that in a minute.
I know.
Okay, anyway, so it's, there's significance to the, to the fact that it's around, is Jordan and it's around, uh, that it's the river Jordan and it's, and it's around, um, um, Jericho. Okay, all right. Okay, so they went out to Jerusalem, uh, from Jerusalem Judea, and they were baptized by him in the Jordan, confessing their sins, right? Uh, a holy life and sanctity is a powerful attractant, especially to sinners. They know that John has great sanctity, that he's somebody who does not, he's not afraid to speak the truth, right? And this is something that's attractive for them. His fame has grown and all of Jerusalem is wanting to go out and hear what he has to say. Cause there's messianic fervor running strong through Israel at this point. They all know that the Messiah is supposed to show up right around this time from Daniel's prophecies, right? They know. And so they're thinking, eh, maybe John's it, right? Maybe John's it. Anyway.
But also in, in, in Malachi four, the very last thing in the Old Testament, literally, the last prophet of the Old Testament, the last verse of the Old Testament says, behold, I will send you Elijah the prophet before the great and awesome day of the Lord comes. And he will turn the hearts of fathers to their children and the hearts of children to their fathers, lest I come and strike the land with a curse.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you so much. Yes. So Elijah has come, okay? So they're baptized, confessing their sins. Notice that they're confessing their sins as they go down to John, right? Confession is not something new to the church of Christ, right? Um, to the, the one holy Catholic and apostolic church and the Orthodox Church, right? Um, there is a strong biblical tradition of confession as an expression of repentance. Um, the Jews, in fact, in certain cases, if you read Leviticus and Numbers, they were obliged to confess their sins to a priest, or at least in front of a priest, right? Um, and so this is not something that would be alien to them. Um, and in the Old Testament, okay, now let's get to the Jordan here. And in the Old Testament, the Jordan, the river associated with God's deliverance, right? Because the Jordan is the river that, that the last obstacle that the, the.
By deliverance, you mean Exodus.
Exodus, that, that, that last obstacle they will cross before going into the promised land to receive the prom, the, the fulfillment of the promise, right? Um, so Jordan is associated with God's deliverance, deliverance, right? Uh, just like they, they crossed through the Red Sea, right? They will, they will cross over the Jordan to the promised land. Joshua, chapter three, verse fourteen. Um, Naamon Assyrian was cleansed from leprosy at this location, right? Uh, near the Jordan, uh, near, uh, Jericho, I believe. Uh, when he, he washed seven times in the river, right?
Second Kings five.
Yeah, Elijah told him, go wash in the river, right? And he wouldn't do it because he said, I got better rivers back home. And, and basically Elijah was like, okay, go on home then. And he went, he ended up going back down, washing seven times in Jordan and was cleansed of his leprosy, right?
As of obedience.
Second Kings five. Um, so anyway, so there's, 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 there's importance to, uh, in history and in history of the chosen people, about the fact that they crossed over that to the promised land and what we saw with Naamon, the healing powers of that baptism for Naamon, right? Foreshadowing our baptism.
Also where Elijah was taken up into the fiery chariot.
Oh, I forgot about that, yeah. Okay. Anyway, both of these, these, these events, the crossing and the cleansing of Naamon, prefigure, uh, the sacrament of baptism. Okay. Um, now, John's baptism was a baptism of repentance, right? It wasn't sacramental baptism, it wasn't efficacy, didn't have the efficacy of Christian baptism, because Christ obviously had not, um, um, go ahead.
Did you mention that it was Joshua who led them across the Jordan?
Uh, no.
To go to Jericho? Because that is important later.
Okay, we'll get to that in a minute, you can talk about it.
Well, that's another chapter, but.
Okay, okay.
I want to point it out now.
So John's baptism.
Led them across the Jordan River.
Yes, John's baptism was not a baptism, was a baptism of repentance. You all know this, right? And it was, it was, and it, but it wasn't the Jewish ceremonial washings that, that they were used to that would remove defilements. If you, if you came into contact with Gentiles, or if you touched a dead body, you had to wash outside the camp and at the evening you come in, right? So there were cer, and the priest would wash before putting his garments on, things like that. It wasn't one of those, right? Um, but it wasn't what Christ was going to inaugurate either, right? It was a baptism of repentance, right? So it kind of held a, a, a place between the two, right? Um, and it was, it was, it was, uh, it's kind of characteristic of ceremonial washings, but, uh, because they, they signify to passing to better times or better things, getting rid of the defilement, right? Okay, and by accepting the baptism of John, the Jews were acknowledging in a formal and a ritual fashion their belief, their belief in that the kingdom was at hand, uh, and that they were willing to admit to, um, um, their sins and to remedy the past guilt, right? This truly is a preparation for the coming, for the receipt, reception of the kingdom of God. This is the repentance that softens the hearts, that, that, um, makes one disposed to receiving the, the, uh, the kingdom. Okay. Go ahead.
Also in Hosea two fourteen, therefore behold, I will allure her and bring her into the wilderness and speak tenderly to her. And then eighteen and nineteen.
Her would be Jerusalem, the chosen people.
Yes, and I will make for you a covenant on that day with the beast of the, anyway, it goes on. Um, so multiple prophets are pointing to the fact that that this is, the desert is where a new, the new beginning will happen.
Okay. Yeah, remember, in a way, in a certain way, I think Jesus is recapitulating the entirety of Israel's history, right? In a way. Okay. Um, verse seven, and when he saw many of the Pharisees and Sadducees coming for baptism, he said to them, you brutal vipers, who warns you to flee from the wrath to come? Now, this could be an expression of his happy astonishment at the appearance of repentant Pharisees and scribes, uh, like who warned you guys to come, right? Um, or probably more likely, it's a warning to them to truly repent. They're wanting to associate themselves with John, who is very popular among the people and who has this, um, um, who has true sanctity, right? And something that people have recognized, they want a piece of that, right? Cause they're used to having that themselves, right? And they don't, they don't necessarily like John having it, but there's nothing they can do about it. So they're going to associate themselves with that. And we act like that, uh, these days as well.
But true repentance must bear fruit, like it says in verse eight. Bear fruit that befits repentance.
Yep, okay. Um, so whatever the case of John saying it, uh, it's a Hebrewism that means, uh, you are vipers sprung from vipers, you're evil children of evil parents, noxious, crafty and poises. I'm quoting a church father here, I think, or. You, you propagate your harmful and misguided moral scruples. Jesus had a problem with that. And errors which you have derived and inherited from your wicked ancestors. Remember, the Pharisees had piled on regulation upon regulation and putting a hedge around the law so that no one could even get close to breaking some of it, right? And they did that and, uh, and in doing that, they lost the true meaning of the law, right? Which was love, which was love. Right, okay. Um, right. So anyway, that's what he's saying, you brutal vipers, you kill your children. Uh, you kill their souls, right? You destroy their souls. Um, meaning they're, this is, they just propagate this stuff, right? And they've lost the meaning, the vision, the true essence of what the law was about, right? Which was love of God and love of neighbor, right? Jesus is going to have a big problem with that, as we know, okay? The wrath to come does not mean the destruction of Jerusalem by Titus. Uh, I guess it could revert to that, but I don't think it does. Um, uh, it refers to the wrath of, of Christ the judge, right? Uh, when he will.
Titus, do you mean the destruction in seventy?
Yeah, in seventy A.D., right? It's talking about the day of judgment, right? Which they, those Pharisees would see at the last day, but they will also see at the ends of their lives, right? The day of judgment. Um, so it's a, it's a twofold day of judgment, right? Um, and Christ will say something similar to the Pharisees almost exactly, uh, to them in chapter twenty-three. He will say, fill up then the measure of your fathers, right? You serpents, you brutal vipers, how are you to escape from being sentenced to hell? Sentenced to hell, right? That's the day of judgment. Okay, verse eight, bear fruit that befits repentance and do not presume to say to yourselves, we have Abraham as our father, for I tell you, God is able from these stones to raise up children of Abraham. Even now the axe is laid to the root of the trees, and every tree therefore that does not bear good fruit is cut down and thrown into the fire. John's saying that, okay? Now, God had promised to Abraham a number of things. He, that's where the covenant was begun with Abraham. Well, we could say with Adam, really, but with, we, we, Abraham is, is where they're tracing this covenant back to, right? Um, and he'd promised to make him a great nation, nation, right? To, to make his ascendance as numerous as the stars or the sands of the, of the shore. I think that's right. Um, he, that he would give them the land, right? That he had brought Moses, uh, Abraham out of, or the Chaldeans, uh, to his own land, and he would give to his descendants that land, okay? Number two. And number three, and probably most important, is that he would, through Abraham, all nations would be blessed. And when we hear the word nations, we should think immediately of what?
Gentiles.
Gentiles. You and me, Gentile going dogs, right? Um, the covenant is not just for Abraham's literal descendants vis a vis Israel, right? It is for all of us, right? And that's what, that is the context in which I think John is saying this, right? So he'd promised to bless all nations. Um, so to be the descendant of nation, of Abraham, according to flesh, does, does nothing for you, right? What is needed is a personal conversion to bring forth fruit, right? Uh, a personal conversion which translates into deeds of a holy life in the eyes of God, right? That is how we know what our interior is. Jesus says that out of the heart comes every kind of maliciousness, right? Evil speech, those kinds of things, right? So by how we act, what we say, uh, what we do, that's a clue as to what's going on inside, interiorly, right? Um, and that's why the fruit's so important. If you're bringing forth good fruit, you know, and you're meaning to do it, you know? Even if you don't feel it down to your bones, if you're bringing, if you're working at it, you know that your soul is in right relationship, right? Or it's wanting to be in right relationship. But if you're a person who does those things for outward show, or if you're a person who does these things, does different things in darkness, things like that, then you need to ask yourself, uh, maybe I need to reevaluate where I am with God, right?
Well, because, and because those actions.
Which I have to do all the time.
We all have to do that all the time. But our actions are not what give us salvation, or what.
No, we don't earn it.
Get us salvation.
We don't earn it, but unless that fruit's there.
Yeah.
You gotta wonder.
If there's not an action, then.
Yeah. And there, there is, and when we talk about, and this is my, this is Deacon Mike's take on merit. People talk, they have such, merit has such a bad, leaves a bad taste in, in our minds, mouths now because we live in a Protestant country, you know, and, and indulgences, blah, we don't want to talk about that kind of stuff. Well, there's such a thing as merit. And what all the merit means, in my understanding, is that you, by living your life this way, by the good deeds, by the prayers, by the almsgiving, right? You are, you're predisposing, you're disposing yourself to grace, right? You're, you're not earning it, but you're meriting to receive it because you're opening yourself up to it, right? Does that make sense, right? Does that make sense? Uh, because you're being perfected in charity and love, right? You're becoming more like God, right? So you're able to resonate more with God, right?
You're emptying yourself, therefore God can fill that.
Right.
Space.
Right. Um, so anyway, he's alluding to making very, um, to real fruit. Okay, it translates, so, and, okay, Abraham was promised the land. Uh, it was going out to the Gentiles. Um, the land of the true covenant, the true promise is the heart, right? That's, that's the chosen land, uh, of the promised land of the new covenant is a pure heart, right? A heart that, that will eventually reign with God in heaven, right? That's, the heaven's really the promised land.
Heaven's the promised land.
Right, right. It's not about where you're standing on the ground in Cana, ladies and gentlemen. It's about interiorly, right? Um, so John's themes, um, so the heart is in the land of the new covenant, and the promised land is eternal life, right? That, 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 that heart living within, uh, the grace and the mercy of God, living in communion with God in a way that will be perfected in the beatific vision, right? Okay. Um, okay, let's notice a couple, a couple of things now, kind of recapping a little bit. John's themes are the same as the Lord, repent. We just said that, right? Right? And to bear fruit that benefits, that, that befits repentance, right? That shows repentance. And to bear good fruit, right? And we'll see Jesus talking about all these things as well. In short, citizenship in the kingdom doesn't depend on you being from Abraham. Uh, but it is, it, the, your citizenship in the true kingdom inaugurated by God, uh, by the redemptive work of Christ requires a radical change of attitude and behavior. Not being a son of Abraham, right? It's, it's opening yourself up to it, right? Through repentance, right? Through what you're doing, how you're living your life, making yourself disposed to receive it, right? Okay, those are the true children of Abraham, the true heirs to the covenant. And that's what John's saying. Okay. And Jesus says something similar, that you've got to change. And, and you, um, in Matthew, uh, in, in chapter nine, verse seventeen, he will say, and this is the meaning of this, neither do they put new wine in old wine skins. Otherwise the wine skins break and the new, new wine runs out and the skids perish. But new wine, which is what Jesus is giving, right? They put into new wine skins, repentant hearts, renewed hearts, right? Uh, and then both are preserved, right? And that's what Jesus is talking about. This repentance, this opening oneself up to what he's offering. Okay. Chapter, I don't know if it made sense or not, verse eleven. Um, I baptize you with water for repentance, but he who is coming after me is mightier than I. Duh, we all know that. Whose sandals I am not worthy to carry. Interesting, he mentioned sandals. Why does Jesus wear sandals? Because he's incarnate. Because he's got a body, right? It's kind of a reference, I think, uh, not a reference, but it's a, it's a kind of a beautiful little picture of, I'm not worthy to serve, uh, to even serve the incarnate, the incarnate God, right? Um, he will baptize you with the Holy Spirit and with fire. We all know that Christ comes with the power of the Holy Spirit. That's going to be manifested, and, and he had it gifted Holy Spirit from conception, right? I mean, he should, he could not have that, he's God, right? Um, and he will cleanse and purify souls by that Holy Spirit, the spirit that he will give, right? The spirit that he merited to give through his true, in the true sense of the word, merited, earned, purchased, however you want to say it. He purchased it, right? Um, that whole gift of the Holy Spirit, which is love, the love of God, right? So it's a thing that puts us in communion with Christ, puts us in, and through Christ with the Father, right? Um, the Holy Spirit is the, this is the glue that holds it all together, we might say in a very crude way. Um, but, and, and the Holy Spirit is that fire, which it's often, um, talked about as fire, and we, tongues of fire and whatnot. Um, because it is something that is ethereal, right? It's a con, it's a concept that is, it's something that is real, but that you can't grab onto, that you can't put in a bottle, you know, things like that, right? So it's, it's kind of a mystical thing about fire. And the fire is also something that, that purifies, right? Um, in Malachi, chapter three, verse two, it says, and who shall be able to think of the day of his coming, referring to the Messiah? And who shall stand to see him, for he is like a refining fire and like the fuller's herb. And he shall sit refining and cleansing the silver, and he shall purify the sons of Levi, and shall refine them as gold and as silver, and they shall offer sacrifices to the Lord in justice. Those purifying fire that burns away impurities, right? That's what fire does, when you smelt, when you smelt gold or silver or anything else, right? It's the fire, and you, you actually see it burning on top, burning away the, um- Yeah, the impurities will float to the top, right, and off of their own fire. Um, so this idea that fire cleanses the impurities. Um, so he comes with, with the Holy Spirit, and that's what cleanses us. Uh, and this may also allude to the very real pain that can accompany personal conversion, um, which the Holy Spirit is accomplishing within us, right? Um, to tear away those layers of ourselves that have accrued on us. What, can't you hear me?
No, your mom is, yes, we receive the Holy Spirit at baptism.
Yeah, and baptism, right, baptism, and then you don't receive them again, but it's, it's at, at confirmation, but it's strengthened, right? It's, it's boosted, right? Um, it's kinda hitting the power button on your controller. Um, that's another bad analogy, probably, anyway. Um, it's, it's something that makes you a warrior for, that's, that's confirmation, it makes you a warrior. Gives you those gifts in order for you to go and do battle, because you're now grown up. Um, you've put away childish things, mm-hmm.
But you don't have to be grown up.
No, you can, no, you can be confirmed when you're a baby. In fact, the Orthodox and Eastern Rite Catholics, probably, they confirm and give holy communion at the baptism. Um, so they baptize, confirm, and give holy communion all to the little baby. Um, they take literally sacraments of initiation and that, cetera and stages. Um, okay, um, so this, this, the, the fire could also refer to this purifying fire, right? That, that accompanies us when we're, when we're trying to amend our life, to live our lives, uh, and sanctity, right? Because we've accrued these things throughout their lives, we have these attachments, and to rip those off of us is like ripping Band-Aids off, it hurts, you know? It hurts, right? So maybe that's also a little bit of that mixed in there as well, that's just my content, that's just my two cents, right? Um, although there was an early church father, Origen, have you ever heard of Origen? Um, in the mid-two hundreds, uh, and, uh, he understood that line of, of fire, uh, of the, of fires of purgatory. Which note, that's in the two hundreds A.D., he's talking about this. That Christ will cleanse his faithful, um, dying and venial sins in a fire of purgatory, according to the words, this is Origen. The fire, uh, he's saying all this, according to the words, and then he quotes First Corinthians, chapter three, the fire shall try everyone's work, and he shall be saved yet so as by fire. First Corinthians, chapter three, Origen saw that as, and, uh, First Corinthians, and what this, this Holy Spirit and fire as the purging fire, right?
Corinthians three, what?
I don't remember what it is. Okay, alright, so Holy Spirit and fire. Um, John's baptism doesn't give the Holy Spirit, obviously. Uh, verse twelve, his winnowing fan is in his hand, and he will clear his threshing floor, and gather his wheat into the granary, but the chaff he will burn with unquenchable fire. Do you all understand what that's referring to? So, back in the day, I've never seen it done, but back in the day, they gather, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the wheat harvest in, right? And I guess they would beat off maybe, uh, the, the, the tops of the-
They would-
Right, so what you, yeah, what you wanna do is get all the kernels out, or get all, get all, you know, get all the, the wheat off, but it's still got the chaff on it, right? If you've ever seen a kernel of wheat, there's a kernel there, and then it's got, well, it's a grass, right? And it's got a, a, a sheath around it, right? And so you would let it dry out, and then, um, you would go into this big pile of wheat, and you would toss it up in the air, and you, you, the, the heavier seed would fall, and the chaff would kinda, would stay suspended a little more, and then it would get blown off, right?
They fan it off.
That's what he's talking about here, right? His winnowing fan is in his hands, so he's gonna, he's going to separate the wheat from the chaff, right? Uh, and gather his wheat, awesome, into the granary, the kingdom of heaven, right? Especially heaven itself, but the chaff he will burn with unquenchable fire, right? Um, so this purifying action, uh, of an individual soul, soul, this, this description produces a distinction, that there is a distinction between those who will accept and those who will refuse the kingdom of God, right? Hence, uh, the Christ action, the action of the Messiah is like a winnowing fan, right? Or the fork, the process of separating the wheat from the chaff, right? The grain is thrown into the air, and wind carries off the chaff, right? And, but also notice that the perspective of it is final. Um, that unquenchable fire is where, is the destiny of the chaff, right? It's the destiny of the chaff. Okay. Baptism of Jesus, we're almost to the end here, which is good, we got four minutes left. I don't know how the Holy Spirit makes us work for an hour every time. We can go over a couple minutes, could we start it late? Okay, baptism of Jesus, verse fifteen, I hope everyone's okay. It'd be nice if we had, if, well, if we had Zoom, we could raise, we could ask questions and stuff, maybe for future, we can do Zoom, anyway. Verse fifteen, but Jesus answered him, it says, Jesus has come down, he's going to be baptized, and John's like, you, I, you should be baptizing me, I shouldn't be baptizing you. And Jesus answered him, let it be so for now, for thus it is fitting for us to fulfill all righteousness. That is fitting for us to fulfill all righteousness. Now, why did Jesus submit to baptism if he's sinless? Is he not sinless? Well, of course, we know that Jesus is sinless. That's why John is so reluctant to baptize him, because he knows he doesn't need this, right? And that's why he says, you should be baptizing me, I'm the sinner, you're not, right? So it's right there in the text that Jesus is sinless, right? So why does he do it? Um, and that question, why, is answered by, uh, the, the text right there. Why? Fulfill all righteousness, to fulfill our rights. John has to accept it, because this is the divine will, this is the divine will. Um, the observance of, of due order established by God. This is what God has ordained is going to happen, John, you will accept it. That's one reason, right? Now, Jesus, of course, came to fulfill the Father's will. Jesus came to fix Adam's problem, not first and foremost David's problem, which was no heir, although he is that. He came to fix Adam's problem, right? Adam would not serve the Lord, right? He chose to do it his own way, right? And I did it my way, a French, and, okay? That's not what Adam was supposed to do, right? And it wasn't the best thing for him to do, to serve the Lord, right? To do the Father's will, to do God's will, that's what Adam was supposed to do, and he wouldn't, and he didn't do it, he and Eve, right? Jesus, the new Adam, is going to fulfill the Father's will perfectly, right? In humility, right? Philippians says, though he was in the form of God, he did not deem equality with God, something to be grasped at. Rather, he took the form of a slave, and being born in the likeness of man was known to be of human estate, and was obedient even unto death, death of a cross, right? That's very high Christology, by the way, uh, from the thirties A.D.
That's Philippians two.
Philippians two, right. So Jesus came to fulfill the, fulfill, fulfill the Father's will. This is another kinda mini, uh, theme of the gospel, in fact, all the gospels, right? Um, he's getting to fill, fulfill the Father's divine plan, which is for him to become man, right? To humble himself, right? And to be in solidarity with sinners, even though he's God, and he doesn't need to be, he's going to go through it with us, and actually, he's going to go through it before us, right? Right, to do it perfectly, to fulfill the Father's will, right? He's going to undo what Adam and the rest of fallen humanity had, had, had done, right? In a way, right? Um, okay, and it's not like, and like I said, this is his theme, it's not by coincidence that he uses the word here, he, here, fulfill all righteousness, he's already used it three times in this gospel, Matthew has, in verse fifteen, two fifteen, two seventeen, and two twenty-three. Fulfill, 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 right? Um, in going to John for baptism, Jesus is showing that he too submits the plan devised by God, right? To prepare his people by the words and the works, uh, of the prophets, right? He's come to fulfill the prophets, right? Um, and, and he's come to, um, to be in solidarity with us, right? In the way that God wanted people to come to the kingdom, right? Um, in this way, the Lord fulfills all righteousness. He does what God is asking everybody else to do, right? Even though he's perfect, right? Um, he does everything that God had laid down to be done, right? And that's so, he's fulfilling all righteousness, right? Justice, observing what God has established, okay? Jesus came to perfect the old order, um, through his humility and his perfect obedience, um, even unto death. Um, and so the baptism, what's about to happen, this event is, I look at it as an, uh, an overture to the gospel, I don't know if that's the right or prologue, right? Something, uh, overture, I, I believe, I understand, is a bit of music before, uh, 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 symphonic or orchestral piece that's kind of a, a, a mini presentation of the entire piece in some way, you can correct me if that's wrong. That's what this is, right? Um, catechism of, um, che- um, paragraph three fifty-six says this. The baptism of Jesus on, is on his part, the acceptance and inauguration of his mission as God's suffering servant. He's taking his place now, right? In fulfillment of these prophecies, he's beginning them. He allows himself to be numbered among sinners, he freely chooses solidarity with us in all things. He is already the Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world. He is anticipating, he is, through his disbaptism event, his solidarity with sinners, his being counted among sinners, and his going down into the waters of baptism, prefiguring his death, and rising out of them, prefiguring his, his resurrection, and the descent of the Holy Spirit, I would say, prefiguring his glory, right? Back, uh, his return back into glory, the right hand of the Father. Uh, he is already anticipating his bloody death, right? He is already coming to fulfill all righteousness, even in that moment, in that event. It's, like I said, it's an overture of what his whole life is going to be, what especially his, this next three years in the Paschal mystery were gonna be, right? He's submitting himself at that moment entirely to his Father's will, right? Which, uh, he's done, uh, it's, Jesus has done that his entire life, right? From his moment of conception, from his being incarnate, he submitted himself to the Father's will, right? That's the theme of Jesus, is obedience to the Father. Totally. This is why disobedience is such a grievous thing, right?
Which in the incarnation is manifest in, um, uh, his needing to be obedient to his mother and father.
Yes, that's true, that's another aspect of it, okay? Alright, so you get how the baptism is kind of a, a, an overture to his entire life, and the fact that at that moment, Jesus isn't just walking down in the water and going, oh, we're supposed to do this, I'm gonna wanna be solid there, everybody, I love you all, baptize me. No, this is Jesus entering really publicly, uh, in, in, and submitting himself to the will of the Father, right? As the Son of God, the sinless one, God himself, humbling himself like this, right? And being counted amongst sinners, right? And that's what he will do for the rest of his mission, okay? Um, verse sixteen, and when Jesus was baptized, he went up immediately from the water, immediately. That's another thing, theme, remember, immediately, immediacy in Matthew, immediately. And behold, the heavens were open, and, and he saw the Spirit, it's John, saw the Spirit of God descending like a dove and alighting on him, and low a voice from heaven, saying, this is my beloved Son, with whom I am well pleased. I'll just quote you the catechism, three, uh, check, paragraph five thirty-six, five three six. The Father's voice responds to the Son's acceptance of what? His acceptance of his humility, of the mission he's received, even the acceptance of his death, right? Which is being prefigured in that baptism. The Father's voice responds to the Son's acceptance, and proclaims his, his delight in his Son. The Spirit whom Jesus possessed in fullness from his conception comes to rest on him. Jesus will be the source to the Spirit for all mankind, it's through Jesus that the Spirit is given, right? Uh, and at his baptism, the heavens were opened, the heavens that Adam's sin had closed, and the waters were sanctified by the scent of Jesus and the Spirit. And, and this is a, um, it's a preclude, a pre- prelude to the new creation, right? Which will happen finally at the resurrection, the new creation, right? That's the beginning of the new creation, right? Uh, now, finally, to get to what you asked me about at the beginning, this all happened in the Jordan, right? All happened in the Jordan, near Jericho. Now, if you look at Joshua, the book of Joshua, chapter three, verse eight, Joshua three, verse eight. The people have just come out, they, they're getting ready to cross over the Jordan into the promised land, right? Like I said, the Jordan was the last obstacle, right? They've conquered a number of different peoples in getting here, and they will conquer, they will continue to conquer and take possession of, 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 of Cana, of the Holy Land, right? Um, but this is their crossing over. And it says, this is God speaking, bid the priests who are bearing the ark, because the priests are carrying the ark, right? Wait out a little into the waters of the Jordan, and halt there. So the ark goes into the waters of the Jordan before the people do, right? So here is the ark, ready to cross the Jordan at your head, this is continuing, God says, the ark which bears record of your covenant with the Lord of all the earth. Choose out twelve men, interesting, huh? One from each tribe of Israel to witness it, to witness the ark going down into the Jordan, right? Uh, and so the people marched out, uh, onto the assault of Jericho, right? The priests carrying the ark of the Lord stood there with loins girt, meaning they, they had their, their robes kinda bound up around their waist a little bit, they weren't dragging at their feet. Uh, in the middle of the Jordan, on dry land, because the Jordan had parted for the people, just like the Red Sea parted, the Jordan had parted, when, when the ark went out there, right? Um, and while, and it remained dry land, it says, while the whole people went past over the dry bed of the stream. So in Joshua three, what we see is the people, the people of God getting ready to enter the promised land. The ark precedes them descending into the Jordan, right? The ark which has what in it? The tablet, the law, the manna, the bread from heaven, I am the bread from heaven, right? And, um, the rod of Aaron, Aaron's, Aaron's staff, right? Which budded, symbol of high priesthood, right? So this is, this is prefiguring in a way what Jesus is going to do. And so the, it is only, so in those waters, Israel descended as they crossed into, came into the promised land. Twelve men are chosen, which is something Jesus will do, right, to witness to this. Um, sacramental baptism, um, received from Christ through his church is the only way, uh, which one may enter into the promised land of eternal life. Just as the ark had to precede those people, and had to go through the waters of the Jordan, even on dry land. That's the only way we are given or know of that we can enter eternal life. Now, God is not bound by what he's set down for us to follow, right? He can do whatever he wants, right? Okay. Through the, through baptism, a Christian is sacramentally assimilated to Jesus, through this gift of the Holy Spirit, where shared the spirit, uh, the same spirit of Jesus, right? That's the connection, right? And the Christian must enter into this min- min- mystery of humble self-abasement, right? And, 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 and following her Lord in humility, and repentance, and go into the water with Jesus in order to rise with him to new life and to be reborn, um, of water and a spirit, right? And then, and that's how we become beloved sons of the Father, right? Through baptism.
And your mom is pointing out the fact that in this baptism episode, it's, it's revealing the Trinity.
Yes.
The Son and-
Yeah, there is the revelation, the, the, the explicit revelation of the Trinity, right? The voice of the Father, the visible Holy Spirit, right? Distinct things, right? Um, sending on Jesus, and then we have the Son there as well, right? Um, I'll leave you with one last quotation, Romans, chapter six, verse four. Says, Paul says, we were buried therefore with him by baptism into death, into his death. We go into the waters, we are descended into his death. So that as Christ was raised from the dead by the glory of the Father, we too might walk in newness of life, in newness of life, right? And so that reception of baptism, that being can, uh, join to Jesus, that receiving the Holy Spirit and divine life within us is for what? For newness of life, that we might bear the good fruit, right? That we might receive the good things that God has given to us. That's all I have for you tonight.
And I have something that, uh, for you, a takeaway, when you're in, uh, prayer this week, and you're, you're reading chapter four, which we will get into next week. Um, take a moment when you're in prayer, and just close your eyes for a minute. And think about the words, this is my beloved Son, in whom I am well pleased. And then I want you to think about hearing God say to you, this is my beloved Son, or this is my beloved daughter, in whom I am well pleased. And really focus on our Father's unconditional love for all of us. For each individual person, for you individually, because he is pleased with you. And allow that to impact your relationship with God, and think about how, I'll think, I'll be thinking about how I can be more repentant in my life and bear more fruit. And I encourage you to do the same, um, you know, thinking about being a beloved child of God this week. So will you give us a blessing, because we're about to run out?
Blessing, okay, uh, since we're over time here, I'll just say, um, may the blessing of Almighty God come upon you and keep you safe and healthy, and protect all your goings and comings this week, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
Thank you all.
Bless you all, thank you, we'll be back at eight o'clock next Wednesday, chapter four.